Okay, so.
But we have sewer and water to that area already.
There's, there's water right adjacent to it in sewer. There's a lift station that serves a server band that's right behind.
Okay, and another, and another thing, right now is that's undeveloped.
Yes.
We, we, we don't have roads in there.
Yes, that parcel is totally undeveloped.
So that's what I'm saying, we don't have, we're not gonna have that cost for it comes in with the subdivision or whatever they usually require to.
I think it's okay to annex it.
I mean, we could annex it in, it's no problem.
I'd say we annex it.
If, if we annex it, what are we gonna need out of it? Do we have any homes?
Well, if they built homes.
No, 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 that's.
You have a hundred feet of population in that area.
Right now?
Yes.
He actually says that the estimated population in 2015 is 25. The hundred that you're speaking to, Councilman, is actually what they estimate the population to be in the year 2029, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, they're gonna say that here.
Says the, the, the area of W1, 2017, the population is 25, where you go all the way down in the year 2029, the estimated.
E1, two.
Okay.
And, and, and we're gonna be in. Annual taxes, that's.
Yes, you would see annual taxes, but the population there is only about 25 right now.
That's all we're gonna get, uh, the price we found out.
The value of the annual taxes of whatever the first value is of those, of that property in the undeveloped property.
So there's, there's, there's not an issue with that getting in. So. I think so it's good they can take them in if we have put any infrastructure there.
It's there to, to that property, there's no press right in front of it.
And, and if some, uh, homes were bought up off you, you know, we got the sewer right there.
Okay, so, and Council, you can somewhat agreement to include W1 as we go forward with the discussion, this is just a discussion.
And if we decide to annex all of these, then we can take them out by way.
Yeah, once they're in, they're in, the day of the day. So, when you leave in, that's the plan. You can take things out at this point. Make anything in, and then we, when we get into August, uh, the plan has been set. So if you don't make any changes tonight, the way to see before he was, what you are, is the official plan.
We can take out the, you said?
You can remove, it's a habit, you can't add in.
Okay.
And in August, it's set, so if you don't change it tonight, which is even, it's.
So we hit it, hit it.
Okay, so we're.
And put it in because if they come before us, we, we can take it out.
No, you can't.
No, no, no. The night after that happens, happens, it's planned, so.
Do it.
So we're looking at W1. And Council can decide to go forward with the.
To go forward with it.
To go forward with.
Now it's what, two?
Uh, W2. I think this was one that the Council pretty much did not.
No.
Uh, this area is all annexed.
And we all decided we can with that.
So we've got to turn consensus, maybe we need to remove W2.
Right.
Will we not remove W?
So what was the consensus on, uh?
The one? They're telling me to include it. But the, the Council hasn't voted on it.
Yeah.
This is just discussion, this is just discussion, so.
And that's why it was, uh, two.
W3.
W3, I think that was the, that's 97, right?
That's here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So it's like, uh, section, you're saying you're looking at W3, or do you?
Yeah, we're gonna. I would say.
There's one.
W3 is a unique little area, it's about six or seven homes right now, 97. They have a population of about 25, and we anticipate those little six homes. We, we hopped over them when we came over here, uh, today we do that. Their waters, those everything's over here, it's about six, is it six or eight homes, I'm sorry, five.
Uh, W2.
W3?
I'm sorry, W3.
There are eleven parcels of, of land.
Yeah, I'm assuming 25 people right now. And that could possibly subdivide out. There's a little bit of room on the, uh, on the south side of 97. For subdivision happening.
Now we've applied order to them now, so there's not a lot of issue. Most of them already have city store, and you see there's a, a nominal deficit of 1,760, there's. This is the small area.
We're good enough.
I would go with that with W3.
There's one.
There's one, uh, that's, uh, going out towards the cemetery.
Yeah.
So that's, oh, that's, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Probably agree.
I don't think it would.
Yeah, everybody had said no.
Right, so.
Not no.
We're getting down to the nitty gritty, to leave in E1, or not to leave in.
I say to leave in E1, E2.
Do I have?
Okay. We're gonna vote in.
But.
I say yes.
Over on E1. Council?
Yes, I want.
Okay, we're in agreement, um, is it E1?
Yes.
No, this is, I mean, just, this is just for thought.
No.
And we're gonna go ahead, and so when we finish with, with reviewing these, we're gonna go on about E2.
Yes.
And E3.
So E2 first, well, E2, they take E3.
Say E2, yes.
Okay, so we have reviewed this, we have heard citizens' comments, and I'm.
Well, it's a sentence on E2.
There was not, so we're gonna take.
There was, yeah, I said, I, I said yes, on E2.
On, okay, on E1, we're in agreement.
Yes, E2.
E2, Council?
Yes.
E2.
Um, yeah.
E2, yes, it's how many?
Three.
Okay.
And then E, on E3, no.
Well, since it's connected, I don't know, and it turns 6,000.
What will be in the black, on E3?
Yeah.
2015? I mean, nine.
Say E3?
Yeah, E3.
The.
6,000.
Year in the black in, uh, 2021. Most of the years.
Any other comments?
No, I was saying, because I voted on E2.
Okay, so, we are gonna move on to the new business, and we're gonna move on to item 4D. Consideration of action to amend the City of Floristville 2019 Annexation Plan. I will entertain a motion by one Councilman to include the sections to be included.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, Councilman Jimenez, please include the sections that you are proposing.
Okay, N1, N2, N3, W1, E1, E2. And W3.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Jimenez, according to the items that were, the areas that he just mentioned, do I have a second to include all of those?
I'll second.
I have a second on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu. Any citizens' comments pertaining to this? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed. Monica, did you get all the V's?
Yes, and there were all, it was all of them except E3, W1.
He said N1, N2, N3? Yes, W1. E1, E2, and W3. Yeah, correctness, those are the ones to be included in that. Included.
And the one that worked, the other ones, do you want to vote on them or not?
No, sir.
No, you, those are now in the.
The one second, Monica, which one, say what you vote.
E3, W1, W, I mean, E3, W2, and that's one.
We'll leave it out of E3, that's part possible, that's E2.
E3 is a no. W2 is a no. And that's one, so, where are you parcel? Did you get all that?
Did you want to include E3?
I make a motion to include E3.
I second.
Hold on, hold on, if you do that, you will have to reset your motion.
No.
Will you amend your motion? You have to amend, make a motion, amend, amend the motion to include E3. And Council, we do have a citizen that would like to speak in regards to that.
Okay, well, okay, well, we're still in the motion, you can't, anyway, speak here.
Okay.
You can, you can speak to your amendment.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna amend it to add E3.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion on the floor to include E3, I have a second, citizens' comments.
25, I'm gonna speed through. It's been an amazing experience coming down here and listening to the way decisions are made. I can't tell you how many times I've been down here and left thinking, it's decided, we narrowly escaped being part of Floristville. I already consider myself part of Floristville, but being annexed with the hope that eventually Floristville will have the funds to provide anything more than the annual taxes, which for us is not gonna be a lot, speaking from my neighbors, we don't have the luxury of adding sections. I have to tell you frankly, it, it's, it's been embarrassing. I mean, a couple months ago, the vote was taken, there was a quorum, everything was decided. Come back the following week, and the absent Councilman changes everything. I understand that there's gotta be progress, but I can certainly see after this experience, why this body is so disrespected. Because you're spending money in the hopes of making additional money to provide something that you can't guarantee that you're gonna be able to provide. It's not proved, and now add insult to injury, of course, I was looking at not being annexed in, like, E3. You're gonna annex E2, which is the most expensive one, which is fine, I would just say, for two reasons. Leave E3 out until you have the revenues and you've completed the major infrastructure investments of 1 and 2. Second reason, if I'm a citizen of Floristville, I fully intend to come down here and participate in this, and try to get some logical, uh, direction here, because this, two, one step forward and two steps back. I understand that some of you really want to see Floristville advance and not be swallowed by city council. You're accomplishing that by annexing yours. Annexing 1, 2, and 3 is, in my opinion, not a financially proven thing to do. You've already voted on 1 and 2, that's a done deal, there's no reason to add insult to injury and add one more. I would ask you to not add.
I'm sorry.
Does it should use it on? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam, uh, we continue with this, uh, E3 out. Out of there, here we move my, uh, motions.
Okay, wait, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Jimenez, and a second by Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Cantu to, to include E3. We finished that vote, all those in favor of including E3 into our annexation plan, please raise your right hand. All those opposed. Fails to reach it, thank you. Moving on to item 4B. 4B, consideration of action to approve interlocal agreement, FISD for IT person, our city attorney, that's the one.
The agreement is being presented to the Council tonight, and say, you know, local agreement, we give the city of Floristville and Floristville, if it's whole district, I believe that Mr. Atkins is saying, I haven't had such a meeting yet, but I believe that he is here in the audience, and he can speak a little bit more into it. In my review of this agreement, it is for a year, basically, starting August the 1st and then ending on July 31st. It's an agreement for, uh, the city of Floristville, where Floristville Independent District, so far, technology employee, etc., who's talking?
Actually, this is the third year of this agreement.
Okay, awesome.
We have the employee, it's, it's just a, a cost sharing, uh, way that, uh, something, three years ago, the state had a 318 person, uh, and we were gonna need some additional IT help this week, and then they know, like, schools, it was kind of a way, uh, where the city didn't have the funds, they didn't have the cost, we didn't have the ownership.
Okay, also, I don't agree with interlocal agreements, I think that that's always good for everybody. So, uh, I reviewed the agreement, I don't see any issues with the agreement, as Mr. Atkins is indicating, it appears that it's been ongoing for the past three years, and I don't think that there's been any changes in the agreement, is that correct?
No, just disconnect.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any questions?
How many days do we use him?
Uh, we use him full time, or usually two days a week, uh, Tuesday and Thursdays, and then there's a time period where we use him more than school, when the school's down, and we need him back and forth. But the, uh, nice thing about it is that he's right there at the administrative office, which is downtown, so if we need anything, well, he can come over there, but strictly now, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays, he, uh, definitely comes to us, and then we share those power days when he needs it, for schools to start to close down schools.
Usually, um, this time of year, with those schools, he'll be working more with us, and after that, feel like I know the most direction from what is in that, trying to get that building up.
Yeah, what I was really excited about, in, it does state in the agreement, it will be a 50-50, uh, split of his work hours, will be at the city and at the school district, but I was really excited because it appears that both parties get to decide on the days and hours, and he will be in either or location, instead of just one person saying, Keith's here, and then, and I will make all the decisions, it's not that way.
Don't think that any issues.
Any, any questions by the Council pertaining to this? I know we've had a good working relationship with Keith for a while now.
Yes, we haven't had any, how it came about, Council, I know some Councilmen, I remember, or knew, is that we didn't have an IT person at all, and as we were getting ready to, uh, do Model City Hall, or even our phone lines, our internet, it has been a nightmare, and we're trying to put those things together. And so Keith is the individual that we share, has put things in order, has really helped us do an IT construction, uh, has presented to you all, as we're talking about our phone lines, and to put those things into order, and he is the geek, and so he speaks that. And so, uh, we have had issues, and he helped us, you know, virtually, I see Secretary opened up the email, they gave us a virus, and he was able to, uh, to do that, and to help protect us as he's done for the school, and we put some policies in place that we did before, uh, we'll be putting some other policies in place going forward, uh, because as you can imagine, technology is definitely a moving target, but we've had no issues, and I would recommend that we continue this agreement.
Okay.
Madam, I move to approve this agreement, whether if I.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu. That's FISD. To approve, uh, for item 4B, do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Seconded by Councilman Neeson, any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, thank you very much. Moving on to item 4C, consideration action to approve joint election agreement with FISD for the 2018 November general election.
Madam Mayor, in regards to this agreement, my understanding is that this also has been insisted for a while, and that it's worked out, is that correct, Ms. Sarkisian?
Yes, sir.
In my further understanding is that the school district does have to team up with someone.
Yes.
In order to, their election, yeah, so, uh, I think that this is favorable to the city, I also think it's favorable to the Independent School District.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
On this general, on this, uh, agreement on 2, item 2, 2.1, can you explain that, please?
Yes, it basically authorizes, it says, nothing obtained in this contractual authorize permitted change in the officer with whom or the place at which any document or record relating to the election or the runoff election is to be filed. Well, we don't have a, we are gonna have the election, we don't have a runoff election, our officer basically in charge of that is gonna be Monica, and then.
And he's in charge.
Uh, for the school district, that is correct. Yes.
Monica's not going to run my election, and I'm not gonna run her election, so all the files that's gonna be in the school district, all the files.
Yes, and what you will do is you will share the common, the polling place, and the machines and stuff like that, I think.
No, we don't have the machine.
You bring your own, okay.
Because we have a machine.
Yeah, we contract, we can.
Yes.
Thank you.
So basically, the.
That's the only question I have.
Yes, somebody else had a question. You have 20 minutes, is that?
No, that, that was, I'll, I'll just ask them if they're sure of the calls for the election.
It says the parties agreed to share the common polling places, the cost of ballot programming, voting equipment, and the common set of election workers with the other political party. Is that correct, Ms. Sarkisian?
But we're not, we're not, we're contracting to the Council, we'll be running our own election. The only thing we're really gonna be doing is sharing our election day, we have to share one polling place, and that, that, that means requiring very much.
I have a question, Madam. So exactly where are we gonna have this election at?
November, you have to have the elections at the county precincts on November, November election day, so we'll all be at the county precincts that day.
No, I think, I don't think so.
No.
I think that that is still an issue to be debated by the Council, they still have to look at that agreement, but they can't be in decide if they are going to enter into that agreement and execute that agreement.
My other question is, if we don't have it with the county, and with the ISD over there, where y'all gonna go? Where y'all gonna go with us if we enter into an agreement?
Well, they're gonna go with the county.
That's right.
What are the elections with the county?
So why are you coming with the Forest?
I don't think you're understanding quite the way that.
Yeah, this agreement is just so that I can continue, the district can continue to have elections, uh, annually, with the, with the state. I have to be joint with either a city, a county, or a college district, and we don't have a college district.
Okay, hold on, let it finish, please.
And, and so, uh, the county doesn't have a general election every year, uh, so prior to that, the, the school district has always had joint elections with the city. It doesn't mean that we have to, we can run our separate elections, we may try to, join elections on election day only, not early voting, election day only, we have that requirement.
So I think the question that the, the Council was trying to ask is, if this Council moves our city election back to City Hall, will they be housed with us at City Hall Board?
Well, my understanding from what I'm hearing from Mr. Atkins is that citizens are to be with the county.
Right, correct. And my understanding of the law is, early voting, you can have party won, but in November elections, you're required to use the county public elections.
Okay, and.
So, can I say?
Uh, I think.
My research indicates a little bit different, it basically indicates that if we're not gonna enter into an agreement, but that's kind of presumptuous of me, because we haven't even brought that agreement with the county and the city. So I hate to speak to that, but nonetheless, from my research, it indicates that if we do not enter into an agreement, early voting, if we're gonna do a poll at the extension, we should also have at least an early voting sign with the county. On our election day, that we could have our own election at our own place.
I think there's a, I think there's confusion, right?
Yes, and that's something that we can look further into, I see, but, so can we table this?
But hold on before we table, uh, I think, I think, since you have to have an agreement, why don't you do the agreement with the county, since there, since therefore you can have your election. Be the same thing and doing it with the same.
Every November, like they used to require.
And the thing is. My thinking, you know, start this was, if you come before us now, tonight, and, and we okay it, then if there's a change with our city parks, done and everything, and we have it there, so you're gonna come with us over there?
I would have to have a, I would have to have a polling election, wherever you have one on election day.
Wherever, we have it, that's what you're saying.
I would have to have one joint polling election.
Right. Election day.
On election day.
Good, okay, so you're gonna follow us, if we, we were to move to City Hall.
I would have to.
Okay.
Unless you make a joint agreement with the county?
No.
I'm not joint, I just contracted, I'm running my election.
I understand that you, you said your agreement to be with the county, with the city, or, or college.
Right, but the county doesn't have general elections every year.
Right.
And you have it every.
We have it every year, so I have to.
Okay.
Councilwoman Cantu.
But, I'm not asking, but the absentee, we would have to, who, sorry, this, Rodriguez, but the absentee, we would have to have it with the county?
No.
But I'm thinking, and, and I think what would be best is for me to do some further research, my research has indicated that if we're not gonna sign an agreement, that we can have it, uh, we must have an early voting sign that is with the county. That's what my research has indicated to be, not an election day, I look at our charter, and our charter is pretty silent on that, it doesn't say anything about that. So if I can have a little bit more time, I've looked all over the place, that's what my research has indicated to me, but if we need further clarification, I always like to be 100% totally sure.
Ms. Atkins, do you have a deadline on, on this agreement, is, is it a?
We're, we're calling our election on August 13th, so I would really need something to place by then.
Because I would prefer having the absentee also at the City Hall, we're gonna move it to City Hall.
Do you have absentee?
Our absentee will be at the county offices, so, and I'm pretty sure that absentee doesn't have to be that long. Pretty sure I've.
By 100% sure.
For about 15 years.
Because of the time, the time constraints on the school, I would ask for some advisement from legal counsel.
Can I have 24 hours to make absolute issue, Mayor, or, I'm seeing something totally different from Mr. Atkins, so I'd like to sit down with him and talk a little bit further about it.
We have a meeting on the night, that is really, really close, however, we can break school, and you are, been nice enough to schedule all these wonderful budget workshops, uh, if we have a form, which we have had in all of our workshops, you can put an action item on that meeting for Tuesday, we haven't quite posted as of yet. It is definitely a break in our tradition, it's nothing wrong with it, you can talk to your attorney to make sure, we don't like to know we do action items, but because of the timeframe, I think the ninth is really closer to.
The ninth will be hard.
The ninth, we could, I mixed, Council.
I think that would be wonderful if I could be given that time, Mayor, so that way I can sit down and speak with Mr. Atkins, I can speak personally with Secretary of State, and once again, I had spoken with TML, they gave me some different thoughts, and, uh, I'd like to sit down with them as well, and speak with them a little further, so.
Okay, is, is it an action item for us to have the election at City Hall, or just, just an agreement for a joint?
This is for a joint agreement with Floristville Independent School District.
Based on your decision, we can decide if you want to put the county on that same, since we're talking about election, you can decide if that time or two you're going for, on the night.
Put it on the night.
Put, put on the night, the election, you know we're gonna have it?
But does it happen for an agreement or not?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, well, I'm gonna move to approve to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to, uh, take all this.
So a motion on the floor to take all item 4C, by Councilwoman Cantu, a second by Councilman Jimenez, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. I'll follow those votes. With five, ninety five.
I suppose, I appreciate it. He is gonna have his, some at the county for his absentee bounds.